Okay, let's take a minute and go over tonight's agenda. Superintendent?
Yes, so we have a couple of changes from what was shared a few days ago. So you will see a shift. The association report has been moved ahead of the administrative report. We want to do that ahead of time. Under the consent agenda, we added policy GCPC-GDPC, Retirement of Staff for the second reading. It was not there in the link that was shared with you. And then you also see an addition in the business agenda for the 2018-19 audit with Ms. Coop will talk about later in the agenda. So those are adjustments to the agenda for tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Let's go ahead and proceed. So I think first on the top, our agenda tonight is school board appreciation.
So this is, one time a year, I get to do a little bit of conversation about our Board of Directors. So as a superintendent, I just want to start off by saying I'm honored to serve as a superintendent and at our meeting tonight with the recognition of our Board of Directors as January is School Board Recognition Month. So to begin, I will read, as I do every year, the State of Oregon Proclamation from the Office of the Governor. So it states, "Whereas access to high-quality public education gives every Oregon student the opportunity for lifelong success, contributing to Oregon's quality of life and economic prosperity, and whereas every student can learn and succeed, especially when given the opportunities they deserve to develop the knowledge and skills to achieve their full potential; and whereas Oregon's educational system has the mission of fully welcoming every child from every background across our diverse state and supporting their learning and development; and whereas the leadership of locally-elected school boards in close partnership with the educators, students, families, and communities they serve foster the engagement, care, and resiliency that leads to equitable achievement for all students; and whereas board members are critical in establishing the inclusive expectations, culture, and conditions that allow for quality teaching and learning; and whereas the committed people who serve on the board of Oregon's 197 school districts, 19 education service districts, and 17 community colleges deserve recognition and thanks for their dedication to the education needs of the students of Oregon. Now therefore, I Kate Brown, Governor of the State of Oregon hereby proclaim January 2020 to be School Board Recognition Month in Oregon and encourage all Oregonians to join in this observance." So with that, as I always do, it's really important for me to reflect in this work that we do together. So as always, as I've done since I've been here, there are a few items, and there's an extra item that will be talked about later by one of our groups. So let me first begin with saying, the first thing that you will see is I have given you each, as I call it, some swag. So you have a tee-shirt there, and this swag symbolizes a mantra or really an understanding that everyone of our students, our staff, and our board have the ability to learn, grow, live, work. And when I mean live, that means be happy and healthy. I think that's a big part of what we're trying to establish because this work is, at times, very challenging but well worth it, that we can learn, grow, live, work, and lead to support students so they are prepared for school, college, career, and as community members. So that's your first one. So on the front is that sort of hashtag with CSD in the middle, and then on the backside is a mix of our visions and strategic goals, as well as some of you have a reference to all the departments within the school district. So there's a couple of different versions of that. Secondly, you will find hyacinth, which is a plant. Hyacinth? Hyacinth? I always say it wrong. Hyacinth. And this represents our growth together. We have had an addition of two new board members this past year, as well as our work with the strategic plan and the continuous improvement processes that we have set forth to get to where we are right now, as we again support students, families, our partners, and this great community. I also want to just recognize that our December retreat, I think we had some great growth together, and that meant a great deal to me. I think that what I'm appreciative about all of you is how we can have really good dialogue, but also have some really intentional conversations of pressing back and forth and really building. So we are supporting our students, our staff, our families, and our communities as we continue to stretch and grow in central school districts. So that's for you to put in somewhere to remind you of the work we do together, right? We go through different seasons, that things can get a little bit hard, you need a little bit more water, you need a little bit more energy. So again, how that can reflect in the work that we do. And then third, you see a map of the school district. And I want to, this is important to me because maps represent relationships between elements. And when you really look at this, in this case, this map represents the relationship amongst the five schools. So you will see those are the two towns with, really identified the five schools on those maps. They also can reference as a roadmap, which allows us to navigate what lies ahead of us. And with the development that we have done with the strategic plan, with the next steps that we're going to take with the Student Success Act and the Student Investment Account, what we have developed with our Continuous Improvement Plan, the processes our buildings and departments are about to start with their Continuous Improvement Plans, we are just charting our journey together as we support student growth and achievement, family involvement, community partnership, and staff leadership and continuous improvement. I look forward to continuing down this road and our journey together over the next several years. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, as a superintendent, I am thankful each and every day for each of you, for the work that we do together, and our relentless work as we continue to develop this gem of a school district. So if you could all join me in just recognizing the board for their great work.[420.12][420.12][applause] I'll go back to you.
Okay. We are now at the Communications from the Floor section of the agenda. Do we have any comment cards? No comments at this point. Just as a reminder, if you would like to address the board, we ask that you fill out a comments card, and then this will be the point in the agenda where we would go over those or give you three minutes to speak. So let's move on then to standing reports and recognition, and we'll start with the Central High School ASBEC representative.
Good afternoon. As of currently, we're currently working on the snowball, which is going to fall on February 1st from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. We, over the break, a bunch of the Central Pageant went on caroling through a few days before Christmas, and we raised $250, which is pretty good. Over the break, we also did a blood drive. That was a smaller project, and I think we got 40-ish people to sign up for that. And then, there's one more thing. We also did a toy drive during break, and that went pretty good as well. As of right now, we're just mainly focusing on snowball. The theme is Starry Night. We're getting everything under planned, getting the DJ. Another initiative that Mr. Roberts is trying to push forward to everyone is starting a kind of service project around our school, a smaller kind of project that is going to grade at least one per year, where it improves, improves the community and the atmosphere of our school. So, yeah.
Very good. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.[541.04][541.04][applause]
Next up is our Central High School Power Peer Representatives.
Hi, my name is Naomi Lopez Melton, and I'm here representing Power Peers.
And I'm Ayana, and I'm also representing Power Peers.
So right before break, we had our winter celebration, which was where we had activities all around the school, and we had an activity schedule. So there's activities all around the school, and it went really well. We had a cookie walk, karaoke, coloring. We had a movie playing, Frozen. And yeah, it was a lot of fun.
We also put out our ownership video before we went to break, and we got really good feedback from it. Everyone, like from all the students, they said that was their most liked video out of all the videos we have put out in the past and this year. And then we also are going to start working on our work ethic video, but we couldn't work on it before break because we were so busy with the winter celebration. So we're going to start planning that and getting that video going.
Another part of the video that we just put out, the message was like taken, like the ownership part of the video. I know there was a few concerns, and the students really took the video well and understood like the deeper meaning of the video.
Excellent. Do you guys post the videos?
Yeah, on YouTube.
On YouTube.
I think it's just CHS Power Peers, I'm pretty sure.
And I will add the link. I just made a note to add it to Friday's report.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you.[647.66][647.66][applause]
Okay, next up are association reports. First up is Central Education Association.
Hello, I'm Lori Frost, and the CEA representative over at Independence Elementary School. So I asked for, kind of sent out a Google Doc because it was falling at the odd time of year, right before the break, so sent out a little Google Doc, asked all the different grade levels and different specialists if they wanted to share a little something about what's been going on around the school. So I'm going to share each of those for you. Our kindergarten group said this year they did a different type of conferencing in November. They had some activities that families and students did first before they came to their conference. It was in a different room to maintain the confidentiality when they were doing their conferences. And they said these activities that they had the students do are the ones that they do in class, and they're tied to the essential standards. And what was nice is when parents came to talk in class about the progress reports, concerns, and other information, they weren't surprised this time because they were able to see what their students could do or couldn't do based on these activities that they had done beforehand. And they said this was a great bonus because in previous meetings, a lot of the parents, their only expectations were that their students are able to write their name and make friends in kindergarten. And so it was, it opened up some great conversations, also talking about what parents could be doing at home to help their students throughout the year. They also said that they really liked, they had a great turnout for their fall conferences, and they said that, what else did they say? Oh, they said they really liked that conferences they had in September during the kindergarten soft start helped to establish a connection between home and school also. Our first grade said that they've been working closely with the reading specialist Gina Carroll in creating their essential standard units of instruction specifically focused around RF 1.3, which would be fictional reading, where students will know and they're able to apply grade level phonics and word analysis skills and decoding skills. They said they've also been working collaboratively with the kindergarten team to understand more about foundational skill progressions, especially with regard to phonological awareness to better identify instructional needs for students reading below grade level. And they said, "The result has been the development of common formative assessments that both first-grade teachers and the Title I staff are using to guide foundational reading instruction and intervention." They're also excited about the work that they have begun as a team to map out the addition and subtraction learning target progression for first grade and develop common formative assessments that help keep track of student learning and determine intervention needs." Second grade didn't get a chance to respond, it was kind of really busy. But our third grade team just finished up their salmon unit, and on December 11th, they released their tiny salmon fry into Ash Creek, which was a lot of fun. They got to see the students get super excited about watching the eggs, watching them hatch, and then getting to release them into the creek. And students learned about the salmon lifecycle, their predators, migration habitats during this unit. Our fourth grade team, Brian Ross, had the opportunity to attend Solution Trees RTI at work training, and during that, he was able to learn the concept of creating goal cards, and this was last year, for essential standards. And so he brought that back to our team, and we started making goal cards last year, just beginning, but this year we've got, we've made a few different ones for our math standards, and we've got to put them into work. And the way these goal cards work is we figure out an essential standard for the grade. For instance, we want fourth graders to be able to add and subtract fluently up to the millions place. So we'll take addition, and we break it into, starting with single-digit by single-digit addition, and move it up each step until they get up to grade level and even beyond. And that's been really exciting because a lot of our struggling students, each year we get some students that struggle with adding single-digit by single-digit every year. And this is a nice visual, letting them see how they're moving through that progression. Not only is it helping boost their confidence, but they're actually, you know, they're coming alive. I had a student at the beginning of the year that would hide under her hood and play with her hair during math time, and now she's asking if she can take some of these worksheets home and show her parents and practice at home. So really seeing her blossom has been wonderful. So we've already incorporated these into our math, and we're starting right now to incorporate these goal cards into our reading essential standards also. Fifth grade classes say they are continuing to work together to build community. Students are enjoying learning about science and social studies while improving reading and writing skills through that content, and they're placing a priority on mastering math facts and priority math standards. Then our specialists, our librarian, she would like to report that they had the highest, she had the highest book fair sales on record, resulting in lots of new books for the library this year. And music, Mr. Roberts has just finished our fourth and fifth grade performance that was themed around music from the movies, and it went very smoothly. He's now working on second and third grade as they prepare for their performance themed around positive character that'll be on March 5th. Our choir performed with both Ash Creek and MES at the tree lighting ceremony at Woo on December 6th, and they also took a field trip to the Capitol Building on December 9th. Both of those performances also went very smoothly. PE, Ms. Griner says, "In physical education, students have been working on long and short jump rope skills, personal physical fitness, and also cooperation." And then also, as our PBIS school-wide team, we've been collecting Golden Pioneer tickets as students are showing respect, responsibility, and safety throughout the school. And so far, they've already earned a popsicle party, a whole-school popsicle party at the beginning of the year. They've earned a rock and roll recess, where they get to play rock and roll music and play with the little blow-up guitars and things at recess, and a cookie castle where each of the classrooms got to have cookies in the classroom. And so they're continuing to collect golden tickets and earn other school-wide rewards, so. In a nutshell, so. Thank you very much.
Thanks Lori, that was a great, great update.
It's a busy place.
The next report is from OSEA.
Our report is going to be very short and sweet tonight. You have some, a token of our appreciation for you is the tulips that you see in front of you. A couple of the notes on it say you are appreciated from OSEA, Chapter 124. And one of the sayings is, "One of the greatest gifts you can give is your time," and we truly appreciate that. You all give your time tirelessly and for our benefit, and we truly appreciate it. My Good and the Bad, the Ugly report tonight was supposed to be brought to you by a couple of our instructional assistants. Unfortunately, one of them got very ill, so we'll do that next time. But Jodine has a few things to say.
We just wanted to continue to thank you, appreciate you for your time. We know that that's something you can never get back by being here, and we know that it's for the betterment of our community for education, and it was really appreciated. We know it's not the most fun, exciting event always, but you know, it's appreciated. And to have you backing, the superintendent backing us, backing teachers, we really appreciate that, so thank you. That's it. Sweet.
Thank you.[1134.91][1134.91][applause] Okay, we'll now move into administrative reports, and I'll hand it over to the superintendent.
So we are going to do a review. We came last year, early spring, to talk about the comprehensive human sexuality health education for elementary K-5. So we want to share with the board just a short presentation of the progress that the K-5 Human Sexuality Health Education Committee has been working on and have really developed and reviewed an initial plan for implementation. I have shared that plan with you early on, in early December, and shared again later in December, so we just had that as a reference. We are still working through some minor adjustments to that. But as we continue to support the development of the whole child, where students are healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged in their learning and growth, this plan clearly supports students in the areas of that healthy and safe for our K-5 students. So with us tonight is the Chair of the Committee, Alicia Bowen, as well as Julie Hamon, who's our Director of Student Services. Julie and I are going to begin with just a little bit of presentation for some background as it relates to the Oregon administrative rules, and then at that point, we're going to turn it over a little bit to Alicia. It's going to come back to me for a little bit of data, and then Alicia's going to share really the crux of the committee. I am going to just acknowledge that a majority of the committee is here. I'm going to publicly acknowledge them for the work that they have done. This has, this is important work. It's not always easy work because this can be a difficult topic to talk about, but with what we want to share with you today, really think that we've made some progress and are taking some really good steps to support the plan. So with that, Ms. Hamon.
All right. So our foundation for identifying what we're going to be teaching in human sexuality is really driven from the standards for public elementary and secondary, our OARs. And so the bullets A and C talk about age-appropriate. When we're looking at content, we need to make sure that what we're providing to students is, the concepts are related to developmental levels and what they can hit with the social, cognitive, emotional experiences. So we have to be very cognizant of that. A couple of years ago, we adopted the Great Body Shop, which is the C, looking at best practice in curriculum. And that curriculum was vetted through community folks and school board reviewed the curriculum, and it's been in play. And I think the work that this committee has done, I think, actually brings it to a whole new level to have it be a more meaningful tool for our staff and our students.
So the next slide really focuses on the comprehensive plan overall as it relates to the instruction. And again, this is defined by the Oregon statute, and this does mean a true K-12 program that emphasizes, and again, when we talk about human sexuality, the, one of the key components of that is talking about focusing on emphasizing abstinence, but also not to exclude the education of students on the use of condoms and contraceptives for skills-based education. This must be a comprehensive plan, and so again, that's why we have really developed a 6 through 12. Now we are focusing on the K-5 and really has been the focus, the committee has done some 6 through 12 work, but really has been focusing on that K-5 perspective. And how do we have a comprehensive plan that is balanced and medically accurate? One of the things that I just want to talk when I state that is you talk, you hear us talk about, we want to make sure that our students use high academic language and rigor. And so when we are talking about health, we need to use the academic rigor and the medically accurate definitions. And so again, some people can see that as controversial, but that is the priority of what we are required to do within that comprehensive education from a K-12 perspective. So that's very important. I want to make sure that that's stated, and part of that process is that we do want them to develop a rigorous academic language as it relates to health for themselves and relationships and different things. And again, Alicia's going to talk a little bit more about that. This also gives students the language and skills to develop and understand the values and attitudes and beliefs and decisions about sexuality as it means for helping students exercise responsibly regarding sexual relationships and sexual health decisions. So again, as we talk about that healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged, this is part of that development of the whole child so that they are healthy and safe and they have support. I'm going to pause for a minute because there was an article in the newspaper. Unfortunately, we had one of our businesses that I know many people may be aware of, that there were some sexual abuse going on in that home. If you read the article in the Idemizer Observer, one of the initial students that came forward is one of our students, and the reason that she came forward is because of what she learned in her seventh-grade health class. And I think that's an important piece of, as we talk about students being healthy and safe, this is a very difficult conversation, I understand, but the fact that we were able to give a student the tools and the words to then allow that person to move forward and do what's right for that person as well as the others that may have been affected by that. So I think that's an important piece. I'm going to pause for a moment because I think that is, A, it's student voice. I think it's giving words to students that weren't a very, a student that was in a very difficult situation, which I think is a part of what our responsibility is as we educate youth today.
As stated, the lovely committee that was facilitated by Alicia is here. One of the things that's really important when we look at who makes up our committees is having a diverse group of people that come from different workforces, different expertise, different lenses. And the ODE actually noted, with great regard and high praise, with this committee's work and the work that Alicia did in facilitating the process of this whole, from the K-5 curriculum to now looking at the K-12. And so very impressed with the depth and the rigor that was put forth with this. So this committee kind of brought all these principles together that we have in our little handbook, and so it's exciting to have it all here to present with you guys tonight.
Well, that was a wonderful lead-in. Okay, so as we had mentioned to you guys the last time we had came to present, we were currently at the time out of compliance, and so the committee focused its efforts with standards driving our work specifically focused with student safety in mind. We wanted to make sure everything was very age-appropriate but centered around Aaron's Law with the sex abuse prevention, and then of course, with the new 2016 Oregon Health Standards helping to guide all of our work.
I'm going to go back to our December meeting, two data points, because I think as we continue to talk about this, data drives decision-making in our planning. And so one of the things I just want to highlight again, although the Healthy Youth Survey is specific for eighth and 11th grade students only, I just want to point out again, as part of this work, so up here on this slide, this addresses the review of the 11th grade related to sexual violence and intimate partner violence prevention, including feeling pressured to have sex, being physically forced into sex, being hit, slapped by a partner, being physically hurt by an adult, or had sexual contact with an adult. I just want to note again, as we shared in December, that we did have an increase in our results of about 10% from 2017 to 2019 as it relates to being pressured into sex, a slight increase from 2017 to 19 of being physically forced into sex, and almost a 20% increase from 2017 to 2019 of being hit, physically hit, being hit or physically hurt by an adult. So again, as we have these conversations, as difficult as they are, it's important that, as I shared before, this is a version of our student voice, and you can see that some of that is still affecting, or we're seeing some increases within our students. As I always say, this data is not cohort data, it is different student. So again, I want to make that aware, but it's still a concern, as I shared in our December meeting. Yes?
Just to clarify the data, so this, the way this chart reads, 30% roughly of our 11th graders have been physically hit or hurt by an adult.
That answered, yes, that answered those questions correct.
Okay. And how big was the sample?
This was, if I, and I remember, I believe it was about 189, 192 kids, students in the 11th grade.
Okay.
Yep. That's, and I will get that to you, Donna. I know it was in that range in that report. The second data piece, again, this shows, and again, part of this is tied to the use of birth control and the effectiveness of the birth control. And again, it's measured in high, moderate, or low effectiveness. And again, I want to just reiterate, the questions that are asked in this section of the Healthy Youth Survey are, "Have you ever had sexual intercourse? The last time you had sexual intercourse, did you or your partner use a condom? What types of methods did you and your partner use to prevent pregnancy?" And they, and they can select multiple birth control choices within the survey. Questions are also asked about their comprehensive sexuality education they receive in school. Questions are also asked about their comprehensive sexuality education they receive in school, including if they have been taught about how to use a condom to prevent pregnancy, have they been taught how to use birth control methods, or where they get birth control, as well as being taught about health, healthy and respectful relationships, which again goes and ties back to the other slide. Again, you can see some slight increase in the high effective use, which is what we want, especially, you can see that from our 11th graders. I think the concern, as I shared last time, was when you look at the low or the use of birth control method with a low effectiveness, the significant increase by our eighth-grade students that did answer this question, if they did, if they were having sexual intercourse, what type of method? Low is not good. We want high effective. And so again, that is, that is a concern when you see our eighth graders with those results from that perspective. So again, we just wanted to, although that, this is focused on K-5, which again is really, and they're going to talk more about what those areas are going to be. But again, this is, we're trying to truly build a K-12 health education program within the schools.
Yeah, I think that data's a great lead-in to this next slide, actually. So this assist in showing the specific topics that are taught, starting at kindergarten going all the way through fifth grade. I would like you to note, the topics that are highlighted in blue are actually the ones that are focused on the Aaron's Law lessons. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But this is ensuring that there are four lessons a year that are covered to help educate and protect our students in child abuse prevention. So starting with kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, it's built into our system at this point. So I've been blessed to work with some amazing stakeholders in our community. I'm sure you guys know a lot of them. Just to be able to hear their perspectives and point of view has been extremely refreshing and they bring some really great insight into our committee work. So I feel really blessed that this was part of the work, was to invite some of these stakeholders to help. Given the complex objective that we have, the committee has been making, tracking, and keeping commitments that fosters the diligent work around the scope and sequence, which we felt was a pivotal factor to the success of our sexuality curriculum. So as you can see here, then, in August of 2018 is when we put together our original committee. It was small at the time. We had a teacher from each elementary school, a teacher leader from Talmage, a district administrator, and then a couple parent community members. In the school year of 2018, 2019, we had regular meetings, sometimes twice a month, which I love my committee for, because I think sometimes they hated me for how many meetings we had. But we went ahead and we extracted the K-5 sexuality health standards. And I think you've had a chance to preview them. They're extensive. So the committee was tasked with really pulling apart the essential standards that we needed just to focus on our sexuality curriculum with. We categorized and organized them. And then we found curriculum within the already board-adopted Great Body Shop to use. And then we had to develop a few extra supporting materials to assist with like some of our vocabulary. And then we also worked on like opt-out letters and parent support and communication plans. In September of 2019, all the way to the present now, the committee met with ODE and community health professionals to review the curriculum. And then we have just started developing an implementation plan, which I love. It's really helping to guide and foster the work that we're doing right now, to actually put it into play in our schools. So it's exciting.
And I'm going to pause because I know Julie already said it, but we have received great praise from the Oregon Department of Education of, A, our process with the committee, B, our thoughtfulness in how we've approached this. Because again, this can be seen at times as a controversial topic. I think it is, I see different, but again, I understand that we're wanting to make sure that, as Alicia said, all voices are at the table. But I do want to recognize the committee for that work and the fact that they are one of the leads in the state for really how this process should be and should look like in a community where all voices are heard through the process. And that means from an educational level to medical representation, to parents, to staff. So again, I just want to say kudos to the committee and Alicia for our leadership as we've gone through this.
Thanks. So this is pointing out, the committee knew that Aaron's Law was going to be a guiding principle to our work and a strategic necessity that we had to make sure was built into our program to make sure it was being met. So if you notice towards the bottom here with the requirements of Aaron's Law, we needed to make sure that there was, the students were gaining an awareness of sexual abuse and learning the skills to report sexual abuse to a trusted adult. And thanks, Jennifer, for bringing up earlier, we have proof of this happening in our community. And so the need to continue to make sure that this is happening to protect our students. On the next slide, continuing the requirements of Aaron's Law, currently in our committee's Strategic Implementation Planning Guide, we have made sure to include these key factors to ensure that child safety is happening. So there are four lessons a year that will be delivered, ideally between February and May, but the dates, of course, will differ from school to school. The instruction is all age-appropriate and medically accurate, and it's not shame or fear-based. Teachers are all asked to review the videos and lessons prior to teaching, just to ensure that they're comfortable with what's about to be taught. And then teachers are going to notify parents prior to any Aaron's Law instruction and then share the lessons and overview or videos with parents if any of them would like to preview that material. The fantastic part about our board-adopted curriculum of the Great Body Shop is it's all available online. So if parents needed to see any of those resources, it's all available, which is awesome. So here, due to the overwhelming number of health standards and complexity of language in the standards, the committee worked tirelessly on categorizing the human sexuality standards into four main categories. And this was to help simplify our planning and ensure that instruction was comprehensive across all grade levels. So our committee worked very hard in picking these four. We had chose preventative care, human anatomy and development, consent and relationship, and then gender and orientation. And within those four categories that we created, they're tied directly to the standards. And so the information that you see there, there are several standards that fall under each of those different subcategories.
And I'm going to pause here for a second because I think what's important to, as Alicia has said, there are a lot of standards. So, and you guys have heard me, we're going to go slow to go fast as we develop this. Our schools on specifically K-5 right now have been working through developing essential standards. When you look at reading and writing, again, we have lots of standards. We're being very intentional about identifying the most important ones that kids will need throughout their career of learning. And I, it is because we want to build lifelong learners. And so again, what I just want to point out is this is that key essential standards focused at K-5 as a starting point of the areas that we will focus on. So again, we were, we're going to continue to have those conversations about essential standards and how we go about that with our staff and committees in developing those in all of our education and academic areas.
Yeah, thank you. So this is kind of our committee's bragging moment here because ODE has asked if they can still our format in moving forward and training other districts through this process. So what you have in front of you, I had just told you about the four main categories that we had talked about and we had divided the standards into those categories. This happens to be focused on the scope and sequence of consent and relationships. And so I just wanted to kind of show you how our committee had laid it out. At the top, you see the curriculum resources. Of course, the Great Body Shop, most of our work comes from. We did have to go to a couple other curriculum sources, which I'll share with you in a moment. But then moving on, you see consent and relationships is the main category here. There's power standards that go with that, all K-5. And then it, we laid it out purposely in this manner to show that, starting in kindergarten, the learning objective is as simple as personal boundaries. And then as we progress, say going all the way to three, the learning objective is now about expressing affection. Where we end in fifth grade, now our learning objective is talking about the impacts of power differences. So consent and relationships is a heavy topic, although when it's implemented with fidelity and aligned the way our committee has set it up, it's very age-appropriate and allows kids to have those skills that the content builds upon for greater understanding and to enhance their vocabulary to be able to self-advocate for themselves. So this is kind of my bragging moment of the committee's work. They did a fantastic job on this part. Okay, so I had mentioned, we had to find a couple other curriculum resources. Of course, we're using, most of our lessons all come from the Great Body Shop. We did have to pick up two others, rights, respect, and responsibility. It's a free curriculum that fully meets the national sexuality education standards. Most schools are using this to fill the gap of what most curriculums don't have. And then the last part is our welcoming schools. And it's also another free curriculum for creating safe and welcoming schools for all kids and families. And we were extremely excited when our committee was actually going through and looking at lessons and viewing videos and seeing the PowerPoint presentations that they had put together. It's very age-appropriate. It's all safe. There is not a lot of extra work that has to be done from our teachers because these resources are so wonderfully put together. So that was great for us. Okay, I'm almost done, promise. Okay, so in moving forward then with our strategic planning and supports that the committee has put into place, our next step of steps of implementation is putting the plan into action and utilizing resources within our current elementary schools. So in the 2019 school year, we are currently looking for early adopters for the K-5 grade levels to implement the actual lessons. The committee is going to work to collect feedback and reflections from our teachers so that we can make improvements and better understand the teachers' professional development needs so that we can hit full implementation within all of our schools with all of our teachers. And then our goal in moving forward for 2020, 2021 year, we would like to then provide professional development training for our teachers so that this can be fully implemented. With some feedback and then parent and community supports and feedback, we feel that the committee is going to be able to move forward and put together a really comprehensive plan that meets the needs of everyone within our community.
And these are going to be some of the next steps. Obviously, the principals have had some initial training, but part of that is going to be working with them to say, who at your grade levels may already have the comfortability and the background to do these lessons? And again, I'm going to continue to say, we go slow to go fast. We're going to do some basic implementation, learn from that, what other professional learning might we need, as Alicia said, moving forward for our teachers. Again, the focus, the focus is really on four lessons in each grade level as a starting point with the early adoption and implementation as we start to move forward with that.
Thank you for your time. That was kind of long-winded. Are there any questions?
So just to clarify, so have any of these lessons or has any of the curriculum that you pulled together been used even in a test case yet? Or will this be the first time it's taught this year?
Theoretically, we've had the curriculum for a long time. And the standards have actually been in place since 2016. So I think throughout our schools, there have been teachers who have taught the curriculum. We haven't necessarily been able to gather the feedback on who's actually done it and what's resulted from it.
And again, that's going to be our next steps with the principals. I believe in conversations even with teachers. There are some that are willing and ready to take that step, to try it out and see how they will build that into their, you know, into their curriculum.
On the birth control part, is that taught in the K-5 or is that?
I believe some of the birth control discussion does come up in grade five. It's at a very low level to introduce the vocabulary. And then the bulk of that curriculum really starts to hit in sixth and seventh grade.
And I want to be clear, in that part, there are parts of the curriculum. And we will continue to communicate this, although I, my goal is that people not opt out because I think it's good, good information for kids to have. Again, the data is concerning to me a little bit in our community right now. Granted, that is eighth and 11th grade, but there will still be opt-out options, Jerry, for families that do not want to be a part of that curriculum.
So how many did you mention the communication plan that you put together, which is, I appreciate seeing that in there? How does that work? If I'm a parent and I've got a kindergartner, what do I see as my kindergartner goes on up through 12th grade?
Well, so part of our communication plan is having a generalized letter that would go out for, from all the schools. So it doesn't matter if you have a kid at two different schools, you would still get the same communication to simplify the process. But alerting parents that this curriculum is starting, we will be coming out between February and May. And then parents will be invited to come in at any time, like open houses or different schools have talked about when they would invite parents to come in and have a viewing of the curriculum or be able to ask some of those questions. And so we just want, part of our communication plan is really being open and so that if parents have questions, that they can bring it forward and, you know, we would be comfortable in answering that.
And we're going to do that here, too. So not only at both the schools, but if a parent comes in to the district office, that we have access to those to be able to let them see the curriculum because everyone does have that opportunity to do that.
Is the, is the document the, that was sent to the board a few different times, the Comprehensive Human Sexuality Health Education Guide for Elementary School, is that publicly available?
It is not yet. It's still in draft form.
Okay. And when, when will that be made public?
We, once, so they're making some final edits and adjustments to it. Part of what this is, is to say, here's where we're at. It will come back because the plan actually does need to be adopted by the board. I mean, we've got a draft plan in place, so that meets the, again, I'm going to talk two different pieces, meets the Division 22 requirement by state law. But then we want to make sure that the committee feels that they have all the correct pieces in there. Once they are confident with that, we'll take that draft off. It will come back to you. We will need to approve it as our K, really K-5, and then our 612 plan that we will continue to put into place. So that's sort of a couple next steps that we need to do, I'm going to say, within this spring. Part of that is, I think, my goal would be that this final adoption of the plan, and again, I'm going to lean more towards the committee, but I do think we want to do some early adoption and implementation of the lesson plans to make sure that there are not main, minor adjustments or tweaks in that plan that we want to based off of feedback from teachers and parents. Because again, parents are going to be a part of this, this process as well.
Absolutely.
But that's still sort of a work in progress with the, with the committee.
Right.
Well, what I've been, the reason I was asking is I was trying to think through, you know, we have a good cross-section committee, and I agree, the work is top-notch. But how do we continue to broaden out exposure in the community around what the plan is, what we're trying to do, so that it's not just parents, but it's actually the community at large? Which is one of the topics we talked about as the board and the role of the board last month in our development session. So we have, we'll publicly post the meeting agenda, actually, we already have. So the slide presentation that we just went through is publicly available.
Correct.
The resources that are mentioned there are publicly available. The only thing that's not is this plan.
Right.
And that's fine. I'm not suggesting that we do something different. But is there anything else that we can do as a board?
I appreciate you asking that. I feel great in that the people that we have currently on our committee, for example, Polk County Health is part of our board. We have some WOU staff that are serving on our board, and then even ODE. And My Future, My Choice, which is a middle school curriculum, those people have also come to our meetings and they've taken information back to their services as well, especially Polk County, and advertising that this is what's happening and helping to build in supports for our parents and our students based on the curriculum and the work that the committee's doing. So I think between the different stakeholders on our committee, the word is definitely getting out and there's supports put in place to help families in viewing this and learning what, what it's all about.
Okay, that sounds great. But I think for us, it's, we can point back to this presentation and the information that we have seen and, you know, think about opportunities to share with our constituents this work.
Yeah, that's important. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for your work and for the presentation. That brings us to the financial and program reports, and I think we'll pass it over to Cease.
You have in your packet the 2019-20 appropriations report. And you will see an unusual thing on there. There is one item that is in the negative, and that is in the general fund in the 4,000s, which is our facilities acquisition and improvement item. And that, as described here, is because of some capital purchases that were budgeted and therefore appropriated in the wrong area. And then also finishing up the work here. in the wrong area, and then also finishing up the work here on the Henry Hill portable. And you will have an action item later in the agenda to transfer money in between those functions to more clearly express where the spending was actually to occur.
So it was budgeted, but it was budgeted in the wrong category?
Yeah. I'll tell you why cafeteria tables would have been put in, for example, I'm not sure what I was doing at that moment.
Kind of like desks.
I know I budgeted money for new cafeteria tables at Central to have one lunch, what happened to it? And there it was, so.
Okay, it looks like we have...
We'll correct some of those issues.
Yeah, so we have several things to...
Couple things coming up.
In the business agenda, okay, great.
Otherwise, things are in good shape.
Thanks, Cease, and that brings us to superintendent's report.
So we are in that next lovely stage, we had an update from OSBA for some updates of policies, so there are about 38 new policies we will go through in the next few months. So this is our first 10 that we will begin to look at, so I will go as quickly as I can. So GBNA, so the G's are the personnel, the first one is specific to hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, or cyberbullying of staff. This policy is language additions to really clarify for staff some of those pieces. The adds to this policy is also cyberbullying, so that was not part of it, that still is a part, when we're talking about staff, our staff could need to not be doing that to each other, and that wasn't referenced, but because of the social media, it needed to be added into the policy. There's also language in regards to retaliation against victims, so if somebody comes forward, very clear that that's not going to, or there are consequences should retaliation take place. There's also additional language as it relates to student behaviors, as it relates to staff and their potential consequences, because again, there have been cases of students and staff having some harassment, hazing, harassment, intimidation, it's not in our school district, I'm saying, but just generally, and why this policy is now referencing that there. The next policy, GBEDA, under personnel, is drug and alcohol testing and record queries specifically to transportation. Again, this is an updated part of that policy tied to transportation as it relates to drug and alcohol testing. Again, that's part of our processes that we already do. It does have an addition of language that relates to the record query requirements, which again, we're already part of this process, it's just clarifying that within the policy from the...
A new requirement comes with the cost of reporting driving records, so that when pre-employment and then on an annual basis, we have to check the driving records of drivers, and it's a national database. So eventually, all drivers everywhere who've had CDL licenses will be in this national database.
The next one, GBEBA, again, under personnel, is referencing to the policy staff HIV/AIDS and HBV. Again, this is an updated policy that removes language as it relates to having an evaluation team to address staff members' condition as it relates to HIV/AIDS and HBV, and the development of policies and procedures for infectious control and public relations media. That was, as I read that as a superintendent, that was surprising to me, I was concerned of, to some degree, a civil rights violation there, and clearly, OSBA has recognized that and the reason that that is being pulled from that policy. The next one, GBEA, personnel, is a new policy, this is a workplace harassment policy, which is a little bit different than the hazing and harassment up above, so it describes who and the location as well as the process if such harassment should occur. It also gives definitions of what workplace harassment is. We are working on the administrative regulation policy, so that will be part of our, when we do the final review, we'll have that AR that comes with that as a reference, so that's really informational only of what that actual process would be, should that workplace harassment take place. The next one, GBA, again, personnel, under equal employment opportunity. Again, this is really talking about when we post jobs and interview, are we equal in our opportunity for people to apply? So this is an updated policy for that, which also really adds in language tied to pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, service and uniformed service, which we already is part of our processes that we've used, familia status, and then any juvenile records that have been expunged. A lot of times, in when we do, when we hire employees, there are finger background checks, and sometimes that process, we call it a staff or potential employee comes up with a ding, we have to have conversations, a lot of times in some of those, it happened 10, 15 years ago, that conversation, there could be documentation that shows that it was actually expunged, so that would, again, that would be part of that process, so they wouldn't be eliminated from potential opportunity to work as a staff member. The next one, ECACB, which is under Support Services, this is unmanned aircraft systems, UASs, otherwise known as drones. You will know that this policy, we, I think my, end of my first year, we had this original, this is an update as it relates to education and the use of the drones. So it clarifies the type of description, what type of drone that we can use in K-12, it's very specific about that, as well as it gives us an exemption, there's actually a fee tied to the Oregon Department of Aviation when we're talking about drones, so that fee would be waived if we do that. It also clarifies the certification requirement of the instruction and of the teacher, so really, right now, we do not have a, from what I am known, a staff member that is trained in this, so we would be doing, if we, as we move forward, or look into doing some sort of, whether it be an after-school activity, or if we actually did it during the school day, would need to find a certified UAS controller, really is what it is, to help supervise and do that. So, that's a part of it, and then the last part, there's new language related to accidents, because there could be an accident, if you're driving a drone around town taking pictures, that, what's that process of reporting? So, again, I bring this, we have not started this conversation, however, it is a conversation that continues to raise, and so we're just going to make sure that we have a policy so that if we ever get to that point, then we're in a good place. The next ones are specific to the board with some updates, so they fall under the B category, so of Board Governance, so the first one's BDDG, and this is minutes of board meetings. Again, this is an update, and it clarifies what information must be captured, which includes results of all votes, and that the vote within that has to be by each board member. So as an example, if we were to be in a five-two vote, in past, we've just said five yay, two nay, now that will be who are the five that said the yes, and who are the two that said the no. So again, we'll have to document that within our board minutes. It also talks about that a hard copy will be maintained and made available at the district office, and it also clarifies, although we are going to be just touching base with OSBA to make sure that the minutes of executive session really have to be the same detail as they are in a public meeting, so we're going to just, we're going to work through some training pieces, OSBA does a really good job both for Adriana and myself, of webinars, to make sure that we're, have the right and appropriate minutes for our board meetings and executive session, so that is a change, and we're just going to clarify with them, so we'll, if there's any questions or concerns about that, we will come back with a second reading if we feel it is necessary, and potentially go into a third reading.
I'm also curious to ask them about the recommended last sentence, which is things that are redacted from the record or withheld from the record, and one of them said each board member vote on the issue. You can't vote in executive sessions, so...
Right.
I'm not sure...
We, and I appreciate that, Cease, because we're, there's some clarity on that that I, we will get, but I wanted to bring it to you because it is a change, and then if we get that clarity, Cease, from them, that we want to go through a second reading, and then a third, we will do that to make sure we have the right information. The next one is tied to BDC, Board Governance of Executive Session, again, that's just minor edits and language changes to the policy, nothing significant there. The next one is the larger one, so BDFC is reporting of suspected abuse of a child, so this is a new policy, this is clarifying that all board members are mandatory reporters of child abuse. We are currently working on getting you set up to go through the training that our staff goes through each year as it relates to reporting of, if there is that process. I think myself, I was talking with Lissa this morning, there are going to be some pieces where, should you be out in the community and see something, that we'll need to put some processes in place, you are the reporters, but it probably would be good for you to tell me potentially of what you saw, and there is a district form that, in all reality, that we would have you fill out if, should that take place within that. So we will, we will get some information out to you, probably in this Friday's report, potentially really sending you the links to start that training, so we can get you, I want to make sure that you have the training before this actually goes into our, really, our consent agenda next month, where then it would go into policy. The next one, BBF, again, Board Governance, Under Board Member Standards of Conduct, and again, minor edits to this, but what is new in that is the addition of a paragraph that references board members are mandatory reporters of child abuse, so you'll see that in that one. And then finally, BBAA, which is Individual Board Members Authority and Responsibility, again, they're just minor edits to the language in that policy. So I'm going to pause, any questions about the policies?
Mandatory reporter, have we not always been mandatory reporters?
It's not been, no, you have not, so this is a new...
Employees of school districts have been mandatory reporters, they just changed the law.
Turns out if you run a youth ministry, you're also a mandatory reporter, so it didn't make any difference to me.
Yeah, so, but we just want to make sure that you have the appropriate training that goes along with that, so you guys feel comfortable if and when, and should that happen, that you have the right, that piece is in place to be able to do that. One last thing for me, I just want to, I know that at our last board meeting, we had a presentation with Shemeketa, we also had a student that came and shared about the concerns of not having the Shemeketa credit courses. We have scheduled a meeting, myself, Ms. Principal Servigna, and representatives from Shemeketa to start that conversation of what that will look like potentially going into next year, so I just wanted to give you guys an update of where we are, that meeting is happening at the end of January to start that process. And that is it for me.
Okay, very good. Lots of good policy work there.
Did the number of policies that we have to review ever go down?
It seems to be pretty constant.
Just checking.
Yeah, we get about, at least since I've been here, it seems like every three months we get about 30 new ones, so.
I do really appreciate the summaries that you put together highlighting the, kind of, the key changes, I've been looking at both those and then the policies, it's really helpful. Okay, that brings us to the board update, our meeting next month is on, where'd I go, February 3rd, early in the month, as it is this month. Our PLC meeting next month, or will be, we'll have a PLC meeting next month on the 24th. Now, I just realized, I'm going to be out of town that night, so we can talk about what the agenda is, whether we want to change that, or just go without me, or whether I could just call in.
Right.
I also wanted to just state publicly some of the things that we covered in our retreat, and on December 16th, we met for about six hours, had a really good discussion. We covered the strategic plan, we spent some time really trying to galvanize in our minds, in our vocabulary, the real purpose of our strategic plan, and the goals of our strategic plan around student growth and achievement, community involvement, or family involvement, community partnership, and staff leadership and development. And as important, we spent time talking about the role of the board in helping to move that along, and my comment earlier about our connection to the community, we spent some time talking about and doing our own assessment, what are some of the things that we need to be focusing on to be a better board, and I took the action to actually summarize our discussion and come up with an action plan that we will adopt and report on periodically, and some of the things that we're working on as a board to become a more effective board. One of those things we also talked about, that's all related, is how we evaluate the superintendent, and just kind of went back through the process and agreed on what the plan will be this year, which will include doing some polling of staff and community members, consistent with that whole theme of being connected throughout the community and organization. So, really, really good discussion, really appreciate everybody's time, and I'm looking forward to the next retreat and continuing our development work. So, that's all I had, that brings us then to the consent agenda, which is the typical consent agenda with our meeting minutes and policy second readings. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you, Don, thank you, Jerry, for the second. All in favor of passing the, or approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. That is four of us, and that is a quorum, so that passes, just barely. And that brings us to the business agenda, so I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
So, this next section is focused on the Continuum of Care Resolution. This resolution is focused on rural Oregon and explicitly Polk and Marion County. As you saw in this resolution, it recommends that the region really assess local inclusion in the rural community, understand how to best to really address and the problems or the concerns that we may have with homelessness and the needs of the people experiencing homelessness. Those of you are very aware that we have a liaison for our, Juan Haudegui, who does our homeless, he's our homeless coordinator within the district. We continue to see an increase, he wasn't here today, so I didn't have an opportunity because I wanted to give you some data, as I always do, but didn't have that, I will put that, gather that information and get that to you in one of the Friday reports once he is back. So I definitely, we are seeing an uptick of that, of our students. I know that I work consistently with my, our principals with some of those in regards to resources, I know even Cease, as our, from a community standpoint, we continue to work through some of those. So, really, this resolution is we become a partner with a larger group within Polk County and Marion County to really develop a plan to how we support and moving forward with this. Again, we do receive funding to be able to support our homeless students. Again, and one of the examples I always use, transportation is one good example, we may have a student that has been in our school district, is homeless, ends up moving to a foster home potentially in Salem, we transport them back because we want to have, want them to be able to have that connection with where they go to school, because we don't want to lose that as well in some of the things that they're already going through. So, what I'm asking is that the board approve, the board of directors approve the resolution of the care model. I do also want to add that there will be a small amount of resources that we will put forth with this, about $5,000 to help support and what that would look like. Again, we're still working through what that's going to involve as we continue to support and work through this within our community. So, again, I'm just asking for just an adoption of the resolution as we continue this work moving forward.
So, please...
It's really through, I mean, there are multiple partners that are a part of this.
There are multiple partners, sorry, multiple partners, this, the Willamette Valley Housing Initiative, Mid-Willamette Valley Housing Initiative housed at the Mid-Willamette Valley Council Governments in Salem. So, currently, Polk County, the cities of Monmouth, Independence, Dallas, Salem came together in this originally, Yamhill was part of it, they've opted not to, and what this is really doing is, there are lots of federal dollars available to these continuum of care associations or organizations. Right now, Portland... Right now, Portland has its own, Eugene has its own, but most of the rest of the state of Oregon is in one Continuum of Care group. So the federal dollars that are coming are trying to be dispersed statewide. Marion and Polk have determined that they believe they have the resources and the need to put together their own Continuum of Care organization. This supports us being a part of that effort. They have to put in a federal application to become their own, separate out of this balance of Oregon Association. And then, federal dollars will actually flow more freely to our specific needs and we'll be able to put together our own plans. So there's a, they've done some feasibility studies of this, we've been looking at this for about three years, and this now will move forward to get that federal approval. But having the school district as part of it, Salem Kaiser as part of it, again, I think most, most jurisdictions are throwing in 5,000 bucks or something, but eventually it's not a cost to us, it's a benefit to the communities.
Right. Because I'm just, I was just curious to know what the, what the head of the organization, who do we write the $5,000 check to? Maybe that's another.
It's to the Council of Governments, because right now they're the fiscal agent.
Okay.
And there is an Advisory Board of 15 people.
Okay. So we need a motion to pass the resolution of Continuum Care Model for Marion Polk County.
Oh, I have a motion to approve the resolution of Continuum Care Model for Marion and Polk Counties and support $5,000 funding from Central School District.
Thank you, Peggy. And Don, any other questions or comments? I certainly, I mean, my comment would be, I certainly see the need for organizing locally, not just to take, you know, take advantage of what dollars are available, but to actually try to start addressing it, confident on a solution comprehensively. The problem's not going away, so. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. That passes. That brings us to the next Business Agenda topic, which I think.
Adjustments to the budget.
Back to Cease.
As previously mentioned, we have a couple of adjustments here. The first one is a resolution transfer. It is item number 2020-1. And this just reflects that reclassification of appropriations. So it takes some money from the Instruction Line and the Support Services Line and moves them to the Capital Project Line where that money will be expended. Does not overall change our budget in any way, and because this is less than 10% of the overall appropriation, it does not require any kind of supplement budget.
Okay. Then we need a motion, and there's a suggested motion in our agenda.
I move to order Dr. Suvanya to move the transfer number 2020-1 to real, reallocate appropriations in the general fund.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Don. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously, and back to you, Cease.
In addition to that, we did appropriate, not only for our bus leases this year, we also appropriated to purchase a bus from, based with money we've gotten from the state for the VW settlement. I want everyone to know that purchase has been completed and we actually have received our VW money. So that's been done. But when we went to do our bus lease for this year, we actually had an opportunity to purchase or to lease one of our full-size trip buses, but we really have found a need when doing these field trips or longer travel for wheelchair accessibility. And so in order to get wheelchair, two wheelchair accessible spots on this larger bus, we actually increased the overall cost of the bus over our projection. And so the lease will be about $900 more this year than we had estimated. This is a supplemental budget. In other words, it increases our overall budget by $900 in the debt service fund. And however, it's not 10% of the fund, therefore, we do not have to have a public hearing on it. The Board can make this change without hearing.
Thank you. So again, we need a motion, and there's a suggested motion in our agenda.
I spilled mail.
This is longer and it's got, it's got numbers in it.
That's why you do it.
I move the Board adopt supplemental budget number 2020-2 to increase appropriations in the bus debt service fund by $900 and the overall budget to $57,855,628.
Second.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions for Cease? I'll call the question then. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, and that motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to the 2018-2019 Audit. Is that you or back to Cease?
I'll Cease right now.
All right.
Start 2021, we gotta finish up 2018-19, and I'll have you know, that's what I was doing my entire Christmas vacation, was getting this thing finished up. So I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to send this out early. I did just receive these findings from the auditor. They have prepared the budget documents, those should be delivered directly to your home for you. And once you've had a chance to dive in and really see everything and have a lot of questions, I'll be able to answer those in the future. But they do review two areas and present their findings. One is, did we comply with a variety of Oregon laws regarding our budgeting process, our procurement process, and other compliance with four public entities? And then they review separately our federal programs. Those programs have their own sets of rules and compliances, Peggy will tell you. And so they have, they issue a separate opinion on that. This year, they had no findings on our federal programs. So that's pretty amazing. Those, again, are our title programs. Our food service program is large enough for them to audit every year. They had one immaterial recommendation of a process improvement that we've already implemented, but it did not rise to the level of a finding. So we are pleased to report that those programs are in great shape. And as always, they found a couple other things we can improve upon, which we appreciate for them. And that was in regards to Oregon law. One of them actually is our budget process. What we've done the last few years in an order to either accommodate the legislature, which didn't provide our funding levels until May last time, or because of the grants we've been getting or because of our end fund balance, trying to really do a better job of projecting that, we've actually had our budget meetings, the Budget Committee has approved a budget, and then we've had our budget adoption later in the month. And at that time, changes were presented, the Board made those changes. Last year, those changes exceeded 10% of the approved budget given by the Budget Committee. We failed to have a hearing on the Budget Committee's numbers and then an additional hearing with the new numbers that you adopted. So just, all that is, is a change in our budget calendar, making sure that we have a hearing at your first June Board meeting. But if we believe that there are still some things kind of out there that might change the final numbers, we would not adopt the budget at that first June meeting. We would then potentially hold another hearing and an adoption later on in the month. You already have a Board Retreat scheduled for June 22nd. We may have other business June 29th. So Jen and I are preparing sort of an additional June calendar for your consideration, just in case. That is our recommendation to correct that issue. And the other one is something that can trip people up once in a while, and that's getting the bids or informal quotes even on procurements based on the dollar amount. And this year, we did have one that I, I recall that I, that they were instructed to get multiple quotes, but we could not produce the documentation of that. And so there is a finding that we did not do that for a very large piece of equipment that the high school ordered. And I, and it occurs to me, we sort of decentralized some of our purchasing, and so I need to do some more training in that, so I'm preparing that. That will go out to more folks rather than just sort of the District Office folks who used to be pretty responsible for the big purchases. We can correct that quickly and avoid this in the future. And those.
What's the limited, what's the dollar amount before you have to get bids?
$10,000.
Okay.
So not, we don't have a lot of one-time pieces that are $10,000, so it's pretty rare that we run into this. And that, that was just one of those unusual circumstances, kind of happened at the end of the year, so. And I think we can fix that right up, but under new Oregon law, I do need to present these findings to you and also our recommendation for corrective action, and you have to approve that or make changes to it as you see fit. And I need to report that then to the Secretary of State and to Oregon Department of Education before the end of January.
I, I do, in our, in our conversation really today in our leadership meeting, I do think with, we just got, we just received guidance on December 19th for the Student Investment Account, so we're right now working through that document. There are timelines and pieces, so there, it's very broad right now of the range. And also, there is a negotiation part with the state, once we have our Student Investment Account Plan. And so again, as, as we were having this conversation today, I do think we're, the corrective action here of potentially having that 22nd date, which we already have, and then a potential additional date because of the way the law is written, just because we are still in this new, which is great. I mean, I'm very excited and as we move forward, stressed but excited of how we're gonna do this, but I just want to make sure because of.
Potential budget changes.
Yeah, the broadness of when we can adopt and, and the timeframe of that. And then also, you know, as an example, if we potentially turn our planning in early March, we may not have a meeting with Oregon Department of Ed for a month or more, depending, I mean, they've got to get through 197 school districts. So we don't, we're just diving into those processes. It just came out that, we were looking at it today, there's additional documents on there, which I have not had an opportunity to dive into. I will do that in the next week or so, so we can really have an understanding, because really, Cease and I have to make sure that we have a timeline, not only of what the Student Success Act is, but in the same time doing the budget part of that. So please work with us, we're gonna give you a few different options to look at, and that'll probably be addressed in the Friday Report, if not this week, potentially next week, as some, here's our first thoughts of what we're, what we may have to look at to make sure that we're in compliance by Oregon state law.
Very good. So to summarize, we've got two areas of corrective action recommendations, and we need a motion. You have a suggested motion in our packet. Again, the, the areas would be on the budget calendar, the second would be then on additional training around our procurement processes. So do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the attached resolution regarding the 2018-2019 Audit Plan of Action as required under ORS 297 dot 466 and direct management to implement actions within proposed timelines.
Thank you, Peggy. Is there a second? Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions or comments? I'll call the question then. All in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your right hand, and that passes unanimously. That brings us to our meeting wrap-up. We're at comments by individual Board members. Anybody like to, Jerry?
I'd just like to address the power peers, they're gone, but our student rep can pass this along. They do a lot of really good work that they don't get much credit for, really. I mean, I would imagine at times it seems like it's a rather thankless job, but they have done a lot of really good stuff in this district and the school, and I think they should be commended for that. So you can pass that along, that one old goat said they're doing a good job.
I think we would all strongly agree with that.
I was excited about the Continuum of Care Resolution, because I also volunteer at the food bank and only on Mondays, but every time I volunteer, we have probably four or five new families come in that have never been to the food bank. And so I just see, I just see the need in our area for more supports. And I really appreciate our food bank because we, our, our community is very generous in donating, and our food bank is, is donations only, although we do get some from Marion Polk Food Chair, but very, very few items. But anyway, I see just every, every, every Monday, there's just new families that come and it's not people with one or two people in their family, it's people with five or six or seven or eight or, anyway, it's, it's, I'm excited to see this, I'm excited to see our District support this.
It's a very good time. Okay. I don't know that we have any items for action at future meetings to discuss, but we did, I didn't mention this during my report, but during our retreat, we did brainstorm and lay out agenda topics for the next several months tied back to our strategic plan, the things that we want to make sure that we're staying on top of. That was actually a really good part of our meeting as well. And we have no executive session, so with that, we are adjourned.